Thirty.
Okay. Yeah, the reason that the meeting took so long to get started was people were just almost everybody in the meeting, I think, was having trouble getting into it and then some got into it, but then they lost the visual, then some lost their audio because they got accidentally muted, and some could only see what was being, some could only see the bottom third of what was being shown. So, you know, it just, it just went to the fact that, you know, most of us don't know how to use this and we're learning. Because my husband tells me that he's on it every single day because his home, his company is based in Belgium. So Belgium and Hanover, I mean Belgium and Lebanon and a couple of other places in the US every day are, they talk to each other constantly.
So, I found participation levels tend to be pretty good when you have widespread people too, and they can't travel and it's more efficient that way.
Yeah, which is his company.
Matt?
Yes?
I know you can't start yet. That said, do you think you'll be having any written thoughts?
My own, oh, my own written thoughts?
Did you say twelve thirty or one thirty?
One thirty, one thirty.
Oh, one thirty, okay, that's not bad.
The actual time the meeting ends.
Okay, okay, good.
Yeah, yeah. No, I just have something afterwards. I gotta go at one thirty.
Okay, that's not too bad. Oh, and Kathy just said she's trying to log in.
Okay.
But, let's see what she said. It wants some account. Oh, no.
Well, the conference number, conference ID?
I don't know. It said she's asking for her account. I'll send her a different link and see if that works.
Okay.
She might be able to get in through the city webpage, live page also?
Oh, let's try that.
Oh, David, are you back?
I am back.
Just as an FYI, I won't be able to make the one thirty conversation.
Okay. Yep, understood.
I'm trying to log in, David. It's taking a bit.
Yeah, Kathy's.
Hey!
Oh, there she is. Never mind.
Yeah, Tom's gonna be probably, he'll probably be in around twelve thirty. But with the quorum, we should be able to get started.
Yep. David, you're going to hit record?
Pardon me?
Somebody already did.
Okay, that was me then. I didn't know if it only does it once.
Yeah, it looks like you started, so that's fine.
Oh, I lost everybody now. Oh, where is it? No, there it is, okay.
Yeah, I'm gonna just keep my monitor off, my camera off, just for bandwidth sake. You all know what I look like, so. Matt, I'll let you, since we now have a quorum and it's after twelve, why don't we go ahead and call this to order and I'll go over some ground rules then.
Yeah, I have it as twelve oh five PM on Friday the twenty-fourth and we'll call this meeting of the subcommittee to order.
Perfect. So, thank you all for participating in this. This has been, it's a master plan goal and it's been part of the department work plan goals for many years to take a little bit deeper dive into our development regulations, site plan and subdivision specifically, to, to make sure the processes that we are, that are outlined there are the ones we want to be following for the different projects and to make sure that our, the design standards and substantive information that we request is up to date and it's, it's as good as it can be. It is specifically a goal to work on to upgrade our regulations with respect to pet bike improvements as well as natural resource protection and possibly even energy, energy use and sustainability. So, we, we're starting with the pet bike work because that's what we're farthest along with, but we'll be bringing you other improvements, other potential language for you to review as we get it ready. In addition, as you're already aware, some other topics with our regulations and specifically procedures about, you know, what is a major subdivision and things like that have arisen more recently and we'll be, we'll be investigating those kinds of jurisdictional questions as well. But again, so Tim is not joining us today. Rebecca's gonna do the heavy lifting and walk us through the pet bike work. Tim will join us at future meetings as we get into some of the procedural stuff, the jurisdiction issues and other things. So, with that, again, this is a teams meeting. We are meeting remotely because of the coronavirus situation. So, the, the same ground rules that we have used for recent planning board meetings will apply here. All votes need to be roll call votes. There shouldn't need to be a ton of roll call votes today because you won't be make, you may not be making a ton of decisions specifically. We'll just be walking through these. But when we do get to votes, including adjournment, those will be roll call votes. I'll be taking notes and minutes more or less and this, this meeting is being recorded. I think there's just, you know, with the limited number of people that we have in this meeting, I think most of us can see each other or see most, almost everybody who's, who's on this subcommittee. But again, if you have comments or questions, please state your name and indicate that you have a comment or a question and wait to be recognized by the chair and then we'll, we'll proceed from there. So that way, all, all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed. And with that, I'll turn it over to Rebecca.
David, can I ask a quick question before we jump in?
Yes, please.
So if we make any, if this subcommittee comes to any decisions today that would then have recommendations for the full board, just out of curiosity, would that be presented then, you know, in, when we have committee reports or would you envision that being its own separate like agenda item in a future meeting?
I think this will ultimately be its own agenda item in a future meeting unless the, I don't anticipate the board or this committee, sorry, sort of making bits and pieces type recommendations. I think you'll, we'll go through the, the, the complete set of amendments that are being offered at the moment and ask you to, when we get to the end of them, make a sort of a, a single comprehensive recommendation to the full board.
Okay.
And then we'll have the full board take up that recommendation and, you know, again, go through the, the regulation, the proposed amendments at that time.
Okay.
So, David, then the timeline to work backwards to fit into our typical cycle for amendments, that would mean like trying to wrap these up by the end of August or September?
No, because this, these, since these are the board's regulations and the whole procedure that applies to zoning does not apply to these regulations. I think we, you know, I don't wanna, I don't wanna drag it out, but I think we can take the time that we need and whenever they get ready, they're ready and the board can then move, as a full board can move towards consideration and, and adoption. We don't have to comply with that same sort of September kickoff and then legal review, board review, council public hearing, because the council won't be involved in these.
Okay. Okay, well, were you all able to open the file that David sent out for this meeting?
Yes.
Okay, and do you have it available right now?
No.
I'm gonna pull it up right now.
Okay. And while you're pulling it up, before I jump in, are there any overarching questions?
Nope.
Okay.
Rebecca, sorry to, to jump back in. Would it make sense for you to share your screen?
Yeah, I can do that.
And then when, you know, as you, as you walk through them, if there are comments, if there are changes, you can make edits right, potentially right on the screen and that can become the working document.
And since I am logged into my Gmail to join this meeting and since the email that was sent to me with that document is in Gmail, I have no clue how to open it without closing this. So chalk it up with generations.
Okay. So, do you see what I just opened?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
Not yet.
Oh, interesting.
Oh, and Kathy, I had the same problem, but fortunately my husband was able to show me. So I actually have two windows open because I had that same problem.
Yeah, you can, you can make a smaller version of the video, basically.
Well, the, both of the, the team meeting window and the site plan with red lining were in, were both in my email and I didn't know how to open two emails at once.
Well, I have my book in front of me is, maybe I can just.
Well, you'll need to see the, the red.
This'll work.
Yeah, this'll work for you, Kathy. Yeah.
Matt, did it show up for you yet?
Yeah, it, it got there.
Okay. Okay, well, this should look familiar so far. I didn't touch the table of contents yet, so we're going to breeze through that. Just not necessarily specific to pet bike, but as a general cleanup and best practice, if we're going to be adding new language, we might as well be doing it to the current norms, which are more and more moving language away from shall to must. It's just the, the current style. So this interpretation section one point three, I added this one paragraph that explains those different terms. So you'll, you'll be seeing those and in a few places you'll notice we say must add, you know, landscaping here, but in other places it says should incorporate like low impact development in the landscaping or things like that that are a bit more voluntary.
So Rebecca, I, I'm thinking on the third line, is that supposed to be must not or shall not?
Must or shall. The third line.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Oh, yep, yep, must not, you're right. Thank you for catching that. Okay. I think that fixes it, right?
Does anyone, does anyone have any comment?
Nope.
Makes sense.
Yeah, I agree.
Rebecca, could you make it as large as you can make it on the screen?
Oh, is it? Okay, let me.
Yes. I mean, it's got the sidebar with where.
Is that better?
Oh, yeah, that's better.
Learning about this screen sharing. Okay, so we'll move on. I want to make good use of your time here. David, did you want to do what Tim had recommended from, with starting on the, the last section and then moving back into the submittal requirements?
Yeah, that makes sense. Again, to get into sort of the concept of what it is we're trying to achieve and then we can go back and make sure we're asking for that information through the submission requirements.
Okay, so.
Yeah, you can, you can take it as.
Right, so just to go back to the table of contents, we have different sections for our submission requirements and our design and construction requirements. The construction requirements are much more technical and that's really where the meat of the changes are. So we'll jump to that and then we'll get back into the submission requirements because this more or less informs the submission requirements. So I'm going to go down to page, it might not be twenty-seven anymore, but where those start, or let's see. Page down. I missed it. It's a little hard with the big fine. There we go, designing construction requirements, article six.
Is it six one? Okay.
Uh huh, six one. And previously, general requirements only had one section, this, this paragraph here. And this talks about the character of the construction and, and safety of it. But if we're going to have general requirements, it's a good opportunity to talk about the overall vision of the community and development, whether it's site or structural being in harmony with the character of the municipality and neighborhood. That's what B strives to achieve and that's definitely qualitative. So this might be something you have questions about. But then again, the planning board is not stranger to making qualitative judgments about when they think something's out of character. Right now, that's inherent, but this puts it into writing.
So, Matt Hall here. So this one for me, I, I, so I like, I think I like the spirit of it in the sense that I like the idea that something shouldn't be radically different than, than what's around it or what the character of Lebanon is, although I could think of some very good exceptions for when that might not, we might not want that. But more broadly, I, I personally think it's too, it's too broad of a, of a statement. I think it could get, get things in trouble. I think I could just see, I don't know, I could see down the line, this, this line used for too many arguments personally.
Can you give an example, Matt?
Well, I could just say, I could, I could honestly see someone almost saying any sort of application for some reason or another could be out of harmony with something of a neighborhood or of the, of Lebanon. I, I think you could use this for any manner of argument probably is my, I guess my concern. I think, again, that's what I'm, I think my, my thought is I could see an argument for something like this in our regulations, but I almost, it would almost to me need to be more specific so that it couldn't be just used for, again, I could just see someone saying almost anything.
Right.
Is somehow not like everything else.
Well, they could, they could, to give an example, like they could say that it's out of the overall, you know, out of harmony. They could say, oh, this one's too modern a style for the other ones. Or they could say, this one is like, it's, it's, it's too vertical and it, and it's, the other ones are wide and this one is tall and skinny, therefore it's out of harmony. I mean, you, I totally agree with you, Matt. A creative person could think of a million ways to work this.
And the Bank Street, the ten Bank Street application is an example of this right now because it's just outside of the historic district, which has some character requirements. So you can't apply those, but at the same time, character's a really big part of that discussion.
Excuse me, Rebecca. David, are you still there?
I, I am, yeah. We, we need to be a little bit careful talking about active applications.
Oh, okay.
But this wouldn't apply to any active applications anyway, would it? Because they came in on, under a previous date?
David means using the examples. We can't use examples of current projects that are before the, before us.
You're, you're both, you're both right. So these regulations would not apply to anything that's under review, but we should try to avoid having three or four of you talking about a pending application to the extent that we can.
If I may, Kathy, one more thought I have is let's say in five or 10 years, there's a new style of energy efficient building that is just, becomes more standard, for example, and it may just, in the nature of it, it may either the walls or the roof or who knows? I mean, and something on the engineering scale might be very different from what we, how we build buildings now. Again, so I, I don't dislike the idea. I, I don't like the heart of it, but I think that it could get us in trouble.
So maybe we can find some examples of what other communities have done because there are many that have a similar requirement.
So this is Kathy and I was thinking of it in broader terms than say the style of a building. I was thinking, you know, if you're, for example, in a commercial neighborhood and somebody proposes a wet market or something like that, that would be out of character with the municipality and the neighborhood. So you would want to somehow or other have some sort of guidelines where you couldn't, you could turn something down because it was drastically unintended and different. As far as the style of a building, you know, you know, we're on the East Coast. I grew up in the Midwest. On any block in the city, you'd have a Tudor house, a Craftsman house, a modern house, a Victorian house, right next door to each other. And, and that's very commonplace. When you come out to the East Coast, you have people who think this neighborhood of a hundred houses has to have the same style.
It can only be salt boxes.
And I wouldn't want it to mean that you couldn't build a Tudor house, you know, because everything else was Victorian or, you know.
But you're, you've given another example of exactly what Matt was saying. This, the statement as it's written is not specific enough.
Okay, maybe that's one we wanted table. It's, if it's not helping, if it's causing more confusion than anything, maybe just.
Somewhere else within the, the regulations, there's a sound similar to this. I can't put a finger on it right now, but I've seen it.
Yes, where it talks about.
Maybe zoning, I don't know.
To be in character in, you know, to be harmonious with the rest of the neighborhood.
I think that's in the, I think that's in paragraph A right above this one.
That has to do with the safety of the improvements.
No, Kathy's right. I remember it someplace else in our.
The very last sentence of paragraph A, the overall intensity shall be.
Well, no, there, there's something that, that like it even has a title.
We ran into it when we were converting that house from a single family to a four unit. One of the restrictions was what we were doing had to be, you know, in other words, it had to be a neighborhood that had other multifamily houses in it is, is what the intention was. I don't remember where we.
It might be that line David was just mentioning. We could just amend this one to say the overall character and intensity instead of having another, a separate reference.
I still am not sure I'd be okay with character there though.
Let's, I'm going to flag this one to come back to so we don't get bogged down, if that's okay.
Sounds good.
The next ones, this talks about when you have an existing development. This is bullet C. If you have an existing development and you're modifying it to meet the standards of these regulations, there is some implication of grandfathering that David is more up on than I am. That said, if, if they're modifying a site to a certain degree, which we don't have a specific threshold for at this point yet, at what point should they be updating their landscaping to meet current standards? Or are they just going to have the same solid pavement parking lot without landscaping that they've always had, even though the, the modified building is practically new? It's, it brings into question when you want things updated.
This is Kathy. This is what you run into. You know, we've had several presentations of how other communities have maybe increased the density of their downtown neighborhoods in order to provide more housing in, in an older neighborhood. If you're, if you have a vacant lot and you're building a new apartment building, say an eight unit building, you can start from scratch and you have the guidelines and you can plan for that. But when you're taking an existing property that doesn't meet any of the current standards, it, it doesn't have fire protection, it doesn't have this, it doesn't have that, it doesn't have insulation, it doesn't, it's so substandard, but it's grandfathered. And now somebody comes along and wants to greatly improve that, to require everything on that property to meet every current standard is maybe a bridge too far.
It is. And that doesn't suggest that here, but there is the question of what, at what, is it commiserate with the level of improvements?
What's, what's a replaced site? Like any modification or replaced site? What's a replaced?
We can't use active examples, David, but can we use completed examples in the community?
Sure.
Absolutely.
So, if, like Thai Orchid, they, they did some substantial changes to open a new business on an existing development. Could they have done it a little bit differently? Like with where the tank and utilities are placed? Maybe that's not the best example. We have some others. Or if the Village Market site were redeveloped, would you want it to be exactly how it is with the traffic circulation and parking? Or would you like to see changes beyond what would automatically be required? Building code would automatically have to be met if they were renovating, but things like, again, going back to landscaping or providing a bike store track or things like that, if they were to update the building, even, even if it's just to change the uses and some aesthetic modifications to the site, can we ask for some small other improvements? Not wholesale meeting with the regulations, but some small improvements to bring it a little bit more into conformance with our regulations?
So this is, this is Matt. I think, I think I'm probably okay with this, especially because at the very end it says unless otherwise approved by the board. So I think, if I'm reading this correctly, it does give the board an out to say, okay, well, you know, we could see an argument for why this element needs to be brought up to standard, but there's this reason or that reason that maybe mitigates this very small thing. Or maybe it's something that we really don't, that we think is not extremely important or is very costly and not reasonable perhaps. So I think, I, I, I think we're okay here personally. I think, I think.
This is Kathy. I have problems with the wording, any modification or replaced site or structural element. I'm thinking of a structural element being a front porch or a gable or an attached garage that somebody wants to tear down or add. A replaced site sounds to me like tearing down a house and building a new. I mean, to me, I don't understand why they're like both in the same, so it's confusing.
Okay, so maybe, maybe the general gist of it is there, but the language is confusing.
And, and the kind of request that you're more like, I mean, that market site is essential to downtown Lebanon. It's unique and huge and major. I think you're more likely to fit, look at all the houses that are in downtown Lebanon that have five, six or seven units in the, in a neighborhood that approves only two family, single or two family. But they're grandfathered because they've been there for many, many years. Now somebody comes along and buys that seven unit property. What are they required to do? I think I asked this question of Tim last week and, and he told me to ask one of the inspectors, but I think it would be better to make it clear. For example, we know that, I've seen a lot of those houses, they don't have adequate insulation, their electric systems are really old, they don't have modern smoke detectors and things like, but they could be rented. don't have modern smoke detectors and things like, but they could be rented, you could buy that seven unit property and rent it today, just like it is without any improvements. We might want it to be at least more improved than it is, more safe than it is, but not completely rebuilt. If we say something like, any modification requires it to be brought up to current standards, then you're not going to get safety modifications done, because it's not, it's cost prohibitive.
So Kathy, are you, just to be clear, I hear you mentioning like architectural, like structural requirements, but this is as the site plan regulations, I think we're talking about two slightly different things?
We had to come before the planning board with the site, David knows, he's familiar with it, just to change a single family into four unit. We had to come before the planning board and get a site plan approval, and get all the waivers and everything. And that was, you know, much lower request than what a lot of the other buildings that need to be modernized would, would require.
This is Joan. Is, are these issues, the safety issues, is that something that the, the building, the codes department, you know, the building codes department would take care of? I mean.
Well, it depends on what's required.
Using your example, don't the safety issues by the building code go, you know, go above everything else?
Not, not in any of the existing homes. They have no jurisdiction whatsoever with regard to anything.
Wow.
Well, I, this is David. There are, if you buy a property and continue to use it exactly the way you bought it, then, then you're not triggering any requirements whatsoever, whether they be life safety, or site plan, or anything else. As soon as you begin to propose changes, adding units, for example, wanting to upgrade certain things, that begins to trigger requirements of other, other changes. For example, if you, I, I think there's a requirement that something like 20% of the improvements to commercial buildings, you know, some percentage has to be applied towards making nonconforming buildings more accessible for, for accessibility requirements, for example.
Are, are rental units considered commercial?
Doesn't necessarily apply to every residential project. It's certainly much more of a commercial requirement there. But again, I think the language here is, we're trying to find where in the spectrum does the board wish to be. Certainly, again, if you, if someone buys a property, doesn't make any changes and continues to use it the way it's been used, then that doesn't trigger, that doesn't trigger anything. It doesn't trigger site plan review in the first place. Therefore, it doesn't trigger any kind of upgrading of a project to meet current standards. If you, if you buy a property and you demolish the building and you build something entirely new, then you're, you're triggering every requirement of both site plan and building code and fire code, for example.
And the problem's in the middle.
But the problem is, the question in this case is, is in the middle. Are there, is there a certain level of improvement at which the board wants to trigger other improvements? Other, you know, bringing other aspects of a property more in line with current site plan requirements in this case. That's.
Can I, can I just flush that out a bit? Let's say that there was a seven unit property in a neighborhood that, you know, allows one or two, but it's been used that way forever, and it's grandfathered, and the elderly person wants to sell it, and someone new buys it as a rental property to continue with seven units. They're not changing anything except they, they realize that the electric system is outdated and really not as safe as it should be. So they want to, you know, update the electric system, and so.
That would not, that would not affect, that would not trigger site plan review.
No, but it, the question is not that, the question is, does it require that them there then to update, you know, like, do they have enough off-street parking places that would be required today? And do they have to have the sprinkler system? And do they have to have X or Y? And in other words, this, any modification kind of thing means they have to bring it up to the standards of the regulations? It's, right now, it's, it's, nobody seems to be able to, to give an answer. And I don't think we should have something in there that you could read different ways.
Was that example a conversion of a single family to a multifamily?
I'm just, I'm using a nonexisting example. I'm saying, if somebody wanted to sell this seven unit property downtown today, and I wanted to buy it, and I wanted to rent it to the same seven people that are in there now, but I wanted to upgrade the electrical system because it's old and knob and tube and dangerous and maybe not ample enough for today's appliances and computers and everything. And so I go and apply for a building permit to put a new electrical system in. Then do I also have to upgrade that house with every other?
No, no. No, you don't.
Well, when I asked him that the other day, he was not able to give me a no. He told me to talk to Brad or Calvin and, or so and so. And it's like, I think that regulations that we write should have an, they should be clear. They should have an answer. You say no, but you know.
Well, that is building code. And, and so if they found something that was a life safety issue that the state requires, for example, like some states, if there's electrical work being done, you actually do have to bring it up to the latest standards. But that's all building code and, and not what we're talking about.
Why does this says any modification or a structural element that replaces?
So like the footprint, like you're adding, they're changing the addition. So maybe that's the part that needs to be clarified.
It has to be clear that it's structural and not something else.
If, if I may, Joan, I'd love to hear your thoughts.
Thanks. I, I can see Kathy's point, but I also, I also can see that we as a planning board, we're not really, we don't really know how the, you know, the inspectors and the, you know, the fire code and electric code, we don't know how those work. We don't know how those interact with what we do. Kathy is thinking about this because she has recent experience with exactly this. So I, I see her point, and I guess I would say that the wording, you know, from the planning board standpoint, any modification does sound maybe too inclusive.
Yeah, this, this is David. Maybe the clarification, or part of the clarification that needs to be made, again, as Rebecca pointed out, we're talking about the site plan regulations. So maybe not every modification to an existing structure triggers site plan review. It may trigger building code, it may trigger fire code, but, but it may not trigger site plan review. So maybe a clarification that could be made in this language is, that says, any modification that triggers site plan review under these regulations shall blah, 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 whatever.
Yeah.
That might be one clarification. There may, again, the essence of the question is, is there a tipping point at which you want to begin to see properties brought more up to code, up, up to the site plan regulations? Not, again, not building code, not fire code, but where you want to begin to require more landscaping, different lighting, whatever, whatever the kinds of site plan review requirements are involved here.
And David, Matt, this is Matt Hall. You know, one thought I have with all, what this committee is doing anyway, is, you know, I mean, again, with all, these are all regulations we can all change again, right? I mean, these are all things that we can, if we play with, we can say, six months down the road, well, that, we shouldn't have done that. And we can, we can edit it accordingly.
Yes, these are, these are the planning board's regulations. You can change them subject to holding a public hearing. You can change them anytime you want.
Right.
Well, I like the wording, this is Kathy, better now with than I did before.
Okay. Sorry, I just can't get this other bullet to be right, but that's something I'll have to play with. Okay, so.
Oh, Joan, Joan.
Oh, thank you, Matt. This is Joan. I was just wondering if anywhere in the regs, do we ever say something about, like, I could see this saying, any modification except those under fire code or building code? Can we put that in there as an informational point for people? Or is that, do we never do that in the regs? Because Kathy was saying, she would like basically a person who's doing, you know, we're saying, you know, we're saying, Kathy, in her professional career, would, you know, would like to know this. And the fact that she asked people and they kind of toss the ball back and forth, kind of means that, you know, does the right hand know what the left hand's doing? And, and if we put in here about, you know, put in a little note that said, except for the safety code or fire code, then someone like Kathy reading these would go, oh, okay, perhaps would then see more of a distinction between what site plan regs cover versus fire code versus building code. We wouldn't be spelling out those. We would just be saying, they exist, so you have to check elsewhere. But.
I'm okay with this, as long as someplace it's defined what triggers site plan review.
Okay, and that is, okay, that is, maybe we should have a reference to that because we do have that section.
Yeah, that's, that's one that we're definitely going to come back to, the jurisdiction. That, that's one of the most important questions that we need this, this subcommittee to work on. But we're, we need to, we weren't prepared to talk about that today.
Yeah.
Okay, let's continue then.
Okay, I'm making note if you can see all the comments, so I'll put that one in bold there. Okay, okay. I think I want to, again, in the interest of time, skip this next paragraph, because that actually gets into even more specific, almost like an alternative to the last bullet. This is more of a quantitative way to have site plan improvements based on the level of modification. But because it's the same subject matter, I'm going to skip over this and come back with David and Tim to try to finesse the language more. So landscaping standards are touched upon a bit with head bike design, because landscaping is a big part of how the, the site is shaped. So if we go down all the way to landscaping around buildings, and some of this is similar to what you have seen with the downtown design regulations, you don't want the landscaping to inhibit access, you want it to enhance access for foot traffic in particular. So instead of just having a landscaped bed, the landscape design must or should incorporate a direct access between whatever the, the public right of way or most heavily trafficked area is and the main building entrance. So that one's a pretty common piece, maybe using other words, but pretty common piece in a lot of communities' regulations.
So here's Matt. Oh, Joan, you can go first.
Go ahead, Matt.
Okay. My, my only question, Rebecca, is just, it's, I guess it's a matter of definition. When we say direct access, does that imply a pathway?
Um, direct.
Or more like, you as a human could walk between a door through a bed to the street without, you could successfully navigate the landscaping to get out of the building to get to the street.
Yeah, so maybe dedicated would be a better word.
Well, I guess more I was curious what you guys were thinking. I wasn't sure if you were thinking like a dedicated pathway, or if you're thinking just the actual ability to escape the building and get through the landscaping to get to a public corridor, if you know what I mean.
I think the key word is short. So convenient and short. You want it to be pedestrian friendly. Pedestrian friendly means not making it a challenge to wind your way through a site, through a parking lot, and obstacles to get to your destination. So direct, as qualified by short, safe, and convenient, it can mean a lot of different things. It can mean partly through a parking lot and partly through the, the front yard, but as long as it's not making someone go through an inconvenient and unsafe route, maybe there's another way to word that.
Okay, now that's, I was more just kind of curious. I, I don't, this one doesn't strike me as one that would get anything in trouble. I was just, I was just curious what, what the.
Well, I mean, if you think about a lot of 12A developments, you're, you're a pedestrian on one side of the street or the other, and you're trying to get to the front door of one of those plaza stores, there aren't necessarily a lot of ways you can go without.
Right.
You know, it's not pedestrian oriented, it's car oriented.
Matt, this is David. Can I jump in?
Please.
I just wanted to let you know that Tom Martz has joined the meeting. It's like his microphone is muted. There, there's Tom.
Hi, guys.
Tom, can you, can you see what's on the screen?
I can see what's on the screen, yeah.
We're just walking through the regulations, Rebecca's reviewing, and each of the members is chiming in with comments. So welcome to the meeting.
Okay, sorry to be joining you late, but glad to be here.
Better late than never.
And Joan, I think you were next.
Thank you. Joan here. I'm thinking about the landscape design must incorporate. I'm thinking about, to use the example of the plazas, even getting from the cars into the stores, they have provided marked places where pedestrians can walk through the aisles of parked cars. But what happens is people tend to go right from their car, up and over the vegetated bed, because they've not planted it like with a hedge. They've planted it with like tree, and then space, and then bush, and then space. And so people use those spaces in between the trees as a shortcut to get to the, to the storefront. And so in my mind, that's a landscape design that's, people can do that. When you're stepping across the, you know, the compacted mulch, you know, to keep the weeds down, you're basically making your own path to the store. But it is short, safe, and convenient. I mean, you're not on the path for pedestrians, but you're in a parking lot. I mean, you're not going to walk 40 cars down the aisle to walk across where it's okay to cross, when you can just hop across. I mean, if you're in a parking lot, you got to keep your head swiveling and looking for cars.
So part of this, the intent of this is to cause the designer to think as the crow flies. So generally speaking, if you're in, if there are four rows of vehicle parking, what is the most likely watershed for foot traffic?
Right.
And then you design a landscape buffer that has a walkway in the middle of it. So maybe there's gravel spaced between the plantings, but in the middle of that landscaped strip, there's a walkway that collects the foot traffic safely away from cars that are backing up directly to the entrance. And that, you know, I've seen Walmarts do that even.
Well, it's just, in my mind, what you don't want them to do is like put a row of rose bushes the whole night. That would be, like, nobody would want to walk through a rose bush unless it was a fire, you know, I mean, because of the thorns. So, I mean, that's what, to me, that's what this, that's where, what I take away from this, is that, like you say, the, you know, path, the straight path, you know, is the shortest distance between two points. So that's what people tend to use for convenience, but it's also what people tend to use in an emergency. So, you know, you don't want to be putting like fences or something that, you know, they really, nobody wants to go through unless it's a fire.
So this leaves a good amount of flexibility and oversight by the planning board for you to catch some of those details. Because we don't want to make this a 500-page-long document. There needs to be some level of interpretation and review. Do you think that you would be able to catch inappropriate plantings?
Yes.
Okay.
Kathy or Tom, do you have any comment?
This is Kathy. I'm, I'm just trying to picture all the different, like Walmart, Home Depot, you know, some of the. you know, some of the little Starbucks and things, especially along 12A, and thinking, what actually is the primary public pedestrian corridor there? It's either a public sidewalk along 12A or the sidewalk in front of the buildings or some pedestrian crosswalk that's painted on the asphalt. Otherwise, I don't know, other than that, what a primary public pedestrian corridor would be in those areas.
Okay, I'm going to show you an example if it will, if my internet will cooperate. It's not cooperating, but I hope it will.
Well, while you're, while you're doing that, for instance, when you walk along 12A, not on the Walmarts, well, on the Walmart side, but where a lot of those smaller businesses are, what you have next to the public sidewalk or paths, in some areas, it's just a dirt path, are kind of like hedges. And I think they're probably there to prevent people from crossing over into the parking lot and getting killed so that they just continue to walk along the pathway until they get to a driveway or a walkway or some entrance way. So the, the landscape design, actually, it doesn't facilitate crossing. It directs or prevents it more than, than giving direct access.
Well, I think that's, sorry, Joan here. I think that's what Rebecca was saying in that that's when it comes to the planning board and that's when we look at the plan of the parking lot and the plan of the vegetation and, and other structures. And that's when we say, oh, you know, but we looking at this and I just know a person, people are going to want to go from this point to this point and they're not going to want to have to go to make a triangle of it, you know? So, I mean, and, and we, I remember cases where we've done that on plans where we've said, you really, it'd be better if you rejigger this a little bit way and the people have, and the applicants have been, oh, okay, fine.
Okay, so are you able to see the satellite view on my screen now?
No.
No?
No.
No, still showing the regulations.
Hey, hey, can I make?
Really? Oh, do I have to share? Maybe I have to share my screen differently because I still have the document shared. Okay, let me share a different.
Meanwhile, Tom, do you have a comment?
Let me just say one thing for just a second because, you know, I understand when we're trying to figure out parking area for businesses and et cetera. But, I mean, the whole area of 12A, I can't think of any place along there except up to Hannaford's where there's sidewalks. So is the city thinking at all about adding sidewalks anywhere along 12A? Because it seems kind of foolish for us to worry too much about whether somebody's crossing through a hedge on the Walmart parking lot when there are all the other problems of getting down 12A as a pedestrian anyway.
So can I jump in on that one?
Sure.
This is David. There, there is a sidewalk network along the west side of 12A that goes from Main Street in West Lebanon Village all the way to the Home Depot.
Right, how cool, okay.
When the Exit 20 project happened about eight or 10 years ago now, they added sidewalks on the east side of 12A from roughly Glen Road to Airport Road. And as of this Monday this week, the continuation of that sidewalk the rest of the way down to Walmart is under construction right now.
Okay.
And that is actually using exaction funds that were required as part of various planning board projects over the last decade or so. Those funds were aggregated and put towards this project, and it's now underway. So I'm, it's a great, it's a great point, Tom, and I'm, and I'm very happy to be able to say that we are adding sidewalks on 12A.
They're also going in on Mechanic Street down by Carpet Mill right now, too.
Yes, yep. That's, that's.
And I guess I apologize and also I'm a little embarrassed that I've not walked down 12A. I've walked through a lot of people in a car driving, so I do apologize. Thank you.
You're not the only one.
Tom, that's fine. That means you're, you are abiding by the stay-at-home order.
That was a test, that was a test, right?
That's right, exactly.
Okay, so.
Joan, sorry, Joan, did you have a comment?
Yes, please, Joan here. Tom, I just wanted to say that, and this is something only I learned. I would have thought exactly what you were saying until I learned by being on the planning board and going to other communities that that's the only way you can get things like sidewalks built where they weren't done the first time. Is you just do it piece by piece and, and eventually they all connect up. So on one hand, it sounds dumb, you know, as people say, well, that's a sidewalk to nowhere. But given another year or two or three and they connect. And, and I've seen this out in, in a town that I go out to in Oregon quite often. And I've been going out there over 10 years. And I, I see places that were, they just ended abruptly with nothing but a yellow fence with stripes that said, don't go any farther. And now it's continuous all day. So it does happen. But there's also, there's the two aspects. There's the walking along 12A, but then there's the walking within the parking lots themselves. So there's actually two things going on here.
And just to comment, this is not our Walmart. This is just an example of a Walmart.
Yes, yes. But Walmarts, you know, have you seen a lot of Walmarts that are very different just in general, big box and a parking lot layout? There's not a lot of variation.
Right.
But some, some places have regulations that require more parking lot navigability for pedestrians. So I'm going to zoom in on this in a second, but here's the building. Here are two road accesses to the left and then at the bottom. There's actually a transit turn-in point with a, that's directly near one of the entrances. The main entrance to the building is right here where the cursor is under McDonald's. So the main traffic for vehicles, that, that doesn't really matter. They're, they're parking, obviously, people try to park closer to the building. But you'll see the, the two red strips. Those are the pedestrian walkways through landscaping that I'm talking about. And I'm going to zoom in a little bit more. So again, here are the main building entrances. You can see they're marked through a different colored pavement to, to highlight them as safe pedestrian areas. And these are the watersheds. So these red aisles are collecting people who walk through the landscaping or through these little connector pieces, these red branches off of the main spine, instead of through the landscaping. But they have gravel, so that's, that's not like they're walking through rose bushes. They can either walk through those connectors or through the gravel into these collectors that take them safely to the main entrances. Now, they didn't do it everywhere. They didn't do it on the, these middle sections. They did do landscaping and they did do some connectivity between the parking rows here. But that does satisfy a lot of the need for a safer, direct connection to the main building entrances.
Yeah, makes sense.
Yes.
Sounds good.
And, you know, you're still, these, these landscaped areas are not all for just pedestrian connectivity or plantings. They're also stormwater management. So they're, they're multi-functioning areas. It's not like they're necessarily losing parking spaces when they do that.
Joan?
I'm sorry to prolong this, but our Walmart has two channels that look like that, if you were to see them from the air. But what they were supposed to be was they were supposed to be lower and they were supposed to take the runoff from, they were supposed to be rain gardens. And over the years, they've put mulch in them. So they're, they don't dip down to receive the water and their, the stuff has started growing in them. So just, you know, that's just, every time I go there, that annoys me to no end because the, the applicant's engineer said, oh, this is a perfect place to have rain gardens because under the ground, under the parking lot is a perfect place to absorb the water that's going to run off the parking lot. But it's not being done.
Well, you should keep that in mind, Joan, because I might not have, I might not have caught it in some of the edits here. But one way that a municipality can keep things as they were designed to function is simply to add the word, not just to design or propose something a certain way, but then to say that will be maintained as well. And it's, it's a small change in wording, but like trees, tree plantings, they often get sacrificed or they're not planted well, so they die. And the project just lets that happen and they don't replant the trees in their parking lots because there was never that word to maintain.
Okay.
And one of the biggest problems with a lot of regulations that we have is that there's no enforcement.
Yes. Joan here, I said Walmart, but I meant Home Depot.
Okay.
It's the Home Depot lot.
Okay, so that was just that one line. I think I have to get back into my screen share, go to the regulations, if you give me a second.
Yeah, while you're doing that, this is David jumping in on Kathy's last comment there. You're absolutely right, enforcement. The ability to enforce these regulations is essential. We can put, we can put anything we want in the regulations, but if we can't enforce it in the long run or if it becomes such a burden to try to enforce it, that, then we're sort of, we're, we're undermining our goals. We, we do not and will not ever have enough staff to sit in every parking lot and make sure that.
I'll volunteer.
Gravel doesn't get replaced with mulch and, you know, or paved or whatever. You know, we just, we can't do that. We have to, we end up responding to complaints when we get them.
You know, a good example of that recently was when the city came to do that maintenance garage at Romano Place Apartments on 12A. And it was discovered that they had a previous approval for rain gardens. And the people who were landscaping or, or cutting the lawns in that development had no idea that those dips in the lawn were to be maintained for drainage. And they just let them grow over and mowed around them or through them. And fortunately, because they came forward with this development request, someone was out there and discovered that, you know, that these had been left to deteriorate. And so apparently now, they're, at least they're supposed to be reviving them so they serve their original purpose. But we would not have, if they had not built that garage, we would not have even known that that wasn't maintained.
Okay.
You're ready?
Yes.
If I may, one question, can you see my screen with the document again?
Yes.
Okay, second thing, what David's saying is true. We don't have the ability to constantly enforce. But going back to when we were talking about general requirements, like when you modify a site a certain way, if Home Depot were to come in for a building permit or they had to correct something else on their site and they were not using that strip the way it had been designed, would you want to be able to say to them, oh, you need to correct that at the same time?
Absolutely.
So it's, you know, it's not correcting everything, but I just want you to keep that in mind.
Can I jump in again? This is Tom.
Sure, Tom.
Because I've kind of run into a similar situation in a whole different episode. But with an agreement that was made between the city and somebody else, you know, let's say Home Depot to, to maintain this water garden concept. And then Home Depot sells the property to Lowe's and Home Depot goes out of business or goes away. How do we, is Lowe's obligated to some agreement that Home Depot made with the city? What happens when property changes hands, I guess? And how do, how does the enforcement of the previous agreement with someone who was the previous owner carry over to the new owner?
Was it recorded?
Well.
The agreement was recorded? A lot of, a lot of these plans are recorded?
Yeah. I don't, I don't know about the recording, but the, the board's regulations, the board's requirements and its approvals run with the land. So if Joe's Pizza goes out of business and it becomes Steve's Pizza, all of the requirements associated with Joe's Pizza still apply to Steve's Pizza.
Okay.
And that would apply to, you know, Home Depot becoming Lowe's, Lowe's becoming, you know, whatever.
Right, okay.
They come, if they, so again, that's, that's, that may be separate. That may be a little bit separate from, you know, some special agreement between the city and Home Depot. But if that agreement was predicated on a planning board approval, then it runs with the land.
Okay.
Can you bump the screen up a couple lines? Because there's a big, something covering the bottom of the screen. I can't see the red.
Oh, um.
The other way.
Okay, the other way. Does that work?
A little bit more.
There.
Okay, so well, now, this is a, a new one. We haven't gone into this next one. So number, so are we okay with three then?
This is Matt, I am.
This is Joan, I am.
Tom is also.
Okay. So the next one then, this is a bit more of, some people might regard it as decorative, but in pedestrian-oriented design, the landscaping defines a lot about how much people even want to be walking or how safe they feel walking. If, if you want to create places that are destinations for people to walk to, place-making is a part of that. This is one of those requirements that says should though. The fir-, the fourth word is should. So it's not requiring these elements. It's not saying you need to do all of them, but it's highly recommending that there is an attractive place for pedestrians so that it's, it's one more encouragement to not be in a car necessarily.
Rebecca, this is Matt, so I have a question for you. So this kind of goes for all the shoulds. So let's say we have an application comes forward and the applicant is not going to take our lovely advice about having a place-making element in their landscaping plan. Because it's a recommendation, do they need a waiver?
No, they, they don't need a waiver, but what it does is.
Then, then my question then is, so would, would then planning staff notify the board that this, this recommendation exists and they chose not to accept it? Or would that be incumbent on the board members to know the regulations well enough to know that this is in the regulations as a recommendation and that these people did not follow? Do you know, do you know what I mean?
Yeah, well, it's, it's like the low-impact development one where, you know, they're encouraged to do it, but you're still getting a lot of places that are just using a retention pond and traditional design. So we're trying to spell out how innovation could occur and where we want things to go without requiring it.
Sure.
And another thing is, say they did ask for a waiver from something similar that's pedestrian or bike-oriented, maybe you would then want to go to something like this and like say, well, at least give us some more of a, an attractive, welcoming pedestrian atmosphere, for example, as identified in Bullet Four. It, it gives some way to have a, a menu of options without requiring everything.
Yeah, so just, this is Matt again, just to follow up. So I, I like this, I like Bullet Four. I think I like it, I think it's a good idea. I like that it's a should because I think, well, I, I, I think I like it. But I think it does bring up another question of, and, and perhaps this is just incumbent on board members, that board members need to, you know, as, board members need to be pretty conversant with the regulations. So this is not, you know, so if we do start adding a lot of shoulds or should-nots, that board members are at least functionally aware of, you know, what, what the board is in its regulations recommending or not recommending. That's probably beyond the purview of, of this, but it does, it does make me think about, you know, how much. about, you know, how much of the regulations as they are currently written, do I know, are we recommending versus requiring? Joan?
Uh, thank you, Matt. This is Joan. Um, I, I hear what you're saying, Matt. And the thing that I'm thinking in terms of knowing the regulations, I'd, I'd like to point out that, uh, almost at any given time on the planning board, we will have someone who has been there for, uh, say less than six months. And I would, and, and we have alternates who are allowed to vote, even if it's, even if it's their first meeting and they feel comfortable about voting and we ask them that, we don't determine that, they are self determining that, um, they can actually vote. And so I would say that, um, what you're saying about the, about the board members being familiar with the regs, I would say it takes a long time to become familiar with the regs, to this detail. I mean, and look, look at how long the regs are, like, um, uh, 66 pages and this one's just the site plan. We also have, you know, the master plan, not regs, but guidance. Um, and we also have the, sometimes, you know, the other one, that's the subdivision. But I, I'm inclining to saying this should be a must, but there's always the waiver process. And so my inclination would be make it as a must and then leave it up to the developers. If they just really feel it's onerous, they do it as a waiver. We discuss it, we say, okay, yes, we see your point. Okay, waived. But to put in stronger after people have had it be lax, it's harder to put the stronger in. My inclination is the nature of people, you put in all, I, I know it may sound negative, but you put in all the things they shouldn't do and then you wait to see what they really don't like at that and then you loosen it up. And I think about the, uh, I'm sorry to go on, but I think about the example of like clotheslines. We've had times when in, on projects, if some of us have, have suggested that clotheslines be allowed, uh, the people will say, oh, nobody wants to have clotheslines, clotheslines, nobody wants to see it. So if you have a development that opens up and then, you know, there are a few people that like to have clotheslines, but that was put no in the, before the place even opened up, they have a, a hu- a monstrous task of convincing enough people to get it changed. Whereas if it, if it, if there were a few people that wanted to do it, but there's so many people didn't like clotheslines, then it would be easy to make it no. So it's, it's easier to, to, to allow the broadest thing that you want and then make it less, or it's easier in this case to make it a definite, but then give an option of you can waive it. If you have some good reasons, okay, we're reasonable people, we'll listen to it and heaven knows, we waive stuff all the time. So waiving is not rare.
Tim had a similar comment about waivers when we discussed things like this. So anyway.
Uh, uh, thank, thank you Rebecca. Thank you Joan. Kathy?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. Um, I think it's imperative that the, we go, that David or Tim goes over with the entire board, what we went over first today, the difference between must, should, whatever, because we, we have a new board member, uh, and we should all just be familiar with the language so that when we're reading it, we know must incorporate and should incorporate do not mean the same thing, so that we understand the, the rules. And then as to this number four, um, landscape design should demonstrate at least one place making element that enhances pedestrian level engagement. And here's where I'm going, and offers visibility on the principal frontage. I'm not sure that I understand what offers a visibility. Um, I mean, to me, I'm just, that's, I'm having trouble with that part.
So would it be better as and is visible on the principal frontage? Because principal frontage is a defined term. So, so are you asking why it's there or what it
One place making element, comma, visible on the principal frontage, comma, that enhances a, something like that. Offers visibility is, is, is a phrase I'm having trouble with.
It's not as clear.
Um, and, um, I, I'm okay with the should because I think if there was a particular development and, um, we felt it was necessary, I think, couldn't we condition it? Make it a condition that they include something like that if, if they weren't committing to it? Sometimes different board members have made suggestions to an applicant who's making a presentation like for signs or lighting at the entrance or something. And they've said, they, they've said on, on record at the meeting that they would do that. Um, but if an applicant wasn't, um, amenable to that, we could always condition it on having signage at the entrance or whatever it was.
Joan?
Um, it's very hard to, it's very hard to put that in the conditions. It's, it's more, much more likely that the applicant will say no. If they have not been given the idea early in their planning, when they come to us for the, in that final condition, they're not gonna, that's too late. It's, and, and if you read this at the end, it says and/or other amenities. So what you're saying is we've got this list of suggestions. If none of these you like, give us another idea. And, and still they can, they can still come to us and say, we just really can't do this and here are our good reasons. Or they'll say, we really can't do this and here are not very good reasons, in which case then we say, uh, sorry, you have to do it. But you see what I mean? The point being that adding it to conditions is way too late in the process.
So are we, is this only relating to downtown Lebanon district or?
No, no. This is, this is, um, this is
Citywide.
Citywide.
Uh, Tom, do you have any comments?
Uh, you know, in my mind, again, I'm probably the new person here, uh, and as a consequence, the idea should and could and everything else and the definitions and how those are defined, uh, I probably do need to be brought up on. But when I look at design should, if I'm somebody who's bringing something before the board, when I'm looking at should, I'm thinking pretty much along the lines, Joan, of what you're saying. It's almost an obligation that I have to do.
No, it's not.
Well, I understand, but, but again, as somebody coming before the board who doesn't understand evidently the position from the board, the word should to me is much more of a requirement than, uh, recommends that, uh, the person does. It should, and I should obey the law. Uh, I, it's a lot different than saying, I recommend that you obey the law.
I think Tom missed the definitions at the beginning of the meeting that
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
It's, it, the answer to your question, Tom, is way up in the very beginning of the regs and you missed, you missed that. So up there, the very first red paragraph explains exactly that.
It's new, it's new. It's just new text.
This is Matt. This, this one strikes me as maybe a good conversation to present to the general board about what we, what everyone thinks about the should or must on this specific issue. Um, unless you really want the committee to make a decision, you know, I, I, I vote on should versus must.
I have one more comment, um, and, and that is, why I asked the question of, does this just refer to the downtown Lebanon district? Cause I'm thinking if someone has a vacant lot and they're proposing to build a three unit house, you know, they wouldn't really even need to have like a placement. I mean, it, it just doesn't fit. So I have to put must in there, you know?
Well, that would make an, I'm sorry, Joan here, that would make it an easy waiver. I mean, that's the kind of thing that, that Tim or David or whoever is reviewing the plan would basically look at it and say, oh, this doesn't really apply to this one. I'm guessing, right? Right, David?
Uh, yes. Yeah. I mean, it's going to be incumbent on staff. I mean, I've, I've been thinking about chiming in on some of the comments that have been made. Uh, it's definitely going to be incumbent upon staff to know these regulations, um, and to point out when and, and how they're being met or not met.
And when, when they really don't apply and, and, and then it becomes a waiver, that, you know, that's kind of a no brainer waiver.
Yes, yes. I mean, we do, we do advise applicants as to when we think they need to, to request a waiver. I, I'm not sure, Matt had a question earlier about, you know, if it says should and it's just a, it's not a requirement, do they need a waiver? And that's a, that's a question that I'll, I'll, we'll need to ask legal because ultimately the legal, legal counsel is going to have to review these recommendations as well. Um, I know Bernie Wa had always had strong feelings about the should versus shall. Um, should is not generally, uh, enforceable and therefore what's the point of putting it into a regulation? I don't know how Christine Fillmore feels, our current legal counsel feels. Uh, she may well feel the same. Um, and so we'll, we're, we're definitely going to need to take that into account as we, uh, as we move forward with the shoulds and the shals.
Thanks. Thank you, David. Rebecca, I have one last point that I, about this, because I, I think your comment box isn't big enough yet, so I think we need Um, the only thing for me is I, I, I am, I'm, I'm still, for this particular one, thinking, should it be should, should it be must? I, do we have a definition in the regulations for place making element or is that just a, a term of art within the industry? Cause I think for me, like, I know that there's examples in here, but I almost may need more, not, not that it needs to be in the regulations, but me make, me as, me as a person recommending one way or the other, I might need more information on what that refers to, maybe visually.
So, so I guess
And we don't need to get into that now, I'm just saying.
Right. Well, I guess the question is like a lot of things. Either we define something upfront and provide examples under definitions, like an ad place making there and take out all of these examples that are here, or we provide examples here. It's, it's almost, it, there are, um, probably regulations elsewhere that do have that as a definition and there are whole organizations like dedicated to place making and defining it.
Sure.
So if we wanted a definition, we could.
Well, I'm not saying we need to. I guess, I think, I think, I think it was Kathy's point is a good one. This one strikes you as almost makes a heck of a lot of sense downtown. Like it ma- it makes a lot of sense downtown or if we're in areas where there's lots of pedestrian traffic. But in another area of town, I mean, we might be waiving a lot of them so, if it was a requirement. So anyway, I, I'm just, we don't need to, there's only, you know, so many minutes left we have today, but I, I just wanted to throw it out there that, and maybe, at least for me, I, I could see this being, um, complicated, I guess. I don't know. Hi Joan.
All I, I was gonna say, Joan here, all I was gonna say is we have done that. I mean, it's, we, we've seen, when we see something gets waived, really often we've said, okay, we, we're convinced, let's get it out of there. And so it's easy, it's a very easy process. As soon as we see this, it's problematic to get rid of it. Um, and that's one of the things that David said in, in the beginning of our meeting is that, you know, th- this, these things are fluid. You know, we try it for, or do, you know, try it for six months, a year, and then we say, oh, yeah, that really wasn't good. We gotta change that. Um, it happens all the time.
One more question?
So
Kat, oh, sorry David.
No, I was gonna try to be respectful of everyone's time and to begin to wind down, but if we're still talking about this section or, or other things, let's, let's have Kathy's comment there.
Thank you, David. I was, I was about to do that myself, but Kathy, it looks like you have a point first?
I do. I have a question. Wherever in these regulations, it previously referred to central business district, are we now just automatically changing that to Lebanon downtown district?
Yes, I believe so. I mean
In, in this section that we're dealing with, right before this, it would be section six point two B, there is a reference to central business district under perimeter landscaping one. And so I had, had that question mark in there. And, and it's in a, it's in a phrase that says except within central business district. So maybe in, in a free, a paragraph like this, we could, we could put in, in the sen- in Lebanon downtown district, you know, making it the only district rather than the only one that wasn't included, the only one that was included, so that people who were, you know, doing something in another part of town wouldn't think that they had to do that.
You, you, I would, I would say you, you have the ability to do that for sure. Um, I think that there is still a central business district. I think the, the paragraph six
Oh, yeah.
It's B1 that you mentioned, or six one B, whatever the
B1, or, or landscaping.
Probably should be amended to say central business district and Lebanon downtown districts because those are, I'm, that currently are two downtown zoning districts. Um, but you're, you're absolutely right. Joan pointed it out a moment ago, there, there are requirements relative to installing sidewalks along frontage and that applies in all districts except the heavy industrial district, for example. So you, you definitely have the ability to, to, um, to carve out sections of the community where a regulation applies or doesn't apply and, and you can do that. I wouldn't necessarily suggest, cause, you know, limiting this to the downtowns because, um, you know, some of these are, are very, very appropriate to our commercial districts, you know, general commercial districts, for example. Um, so that, I mean, that'll, that'll be one of the things that, uh, that the board decides for itself. And, and again, um, these are your regulations, you can amend them whenever you feel it's appropriate to amend them.
Well, thank, thank you, David. Do you want to wind us down?
I do. Um, you know, I think this has been a very, it's been a great conversation. I appreciate your participation. Um, you can see how easy it is and how easy it will be to really get into the weeds here. Um, we're gonna do our best to sort of keep, keep the conversation moving because we could spend, you know, we could spend an entire hour and a half conversation talking about one little section. Um, we do, although there's no specific timeline that you're working under or deadline that you're working under, we certainly don't want to take forever to do these. Um, and so I, it's, it is, it is very clear, this is going to take, um, many meetings of this subcommittee, uh, to get through the regulations and then hopefully we'll be at a point where once it's gone through the subcommittee, the, the full board will not take, not replicate the entire review, but will take the subcommittee's, um, thoughts on, on certain things. Um, but with that in mind, I, I wanted to talk a little bit about when, how, how frequently you would, you feel comfortable being able to meet. You know, is this, is this time slot? I know, I know Tom has, uh, a conflict now until, uh, at least for Fridays. I'll let you speak for yourself, Tom. Um, so that if this meeting could be pushed back by half an hour, if it's going to stay on Fridays, that might work better for him. Maybe there's a, a different day or a different time that works generally speaking.
Uh, and David, if I may, I'm gonna have to actually leave very shortly. Do I need to designate a, a, another chair while, before I leave?
Uh, you, no, I don't, no.
Okay, fair enough.
The remaining members can designate one among themselves.
Sounds good. Well, uh, generally this probably would work fairly good with me. I am working, so it, it may be dependent, but generally for me, Fridays, Friday afternoons are pretty good. Um, but I'll, I'll say goodbye to you all now and I, I, I will say, I look forward to our next chat.
Bye.
Bye now.
Bye, Matt. Have a good weekend.
And I can be fairly flexible, so.
Okay. Uh, Tom, do you want to jump in?
Well, yeah, uh, thanks Dave, uh, David. And, you know, I apologize the fact that, uh, I have something that unfortunately is every Friday and it's at 11:30 to 12:30. So if I'm gonna join and it stays at the current time, I'll have to join you half an hour into the, the meeting. Uh, hopefully I won't make the same mistake next time that I did this time and not realize we'd already talked about shoulds, et cetera beforehand. And so I sort of was dragging you back through that one again. Um, I think you all will have to, you know, decide whether me coming in a half hour late is too problematic or whether that works okay and, you know, we can just go at the same time.
Joan?
Um, I don't feel bad at all, Tom. And all the comments I made were not directed directly at you. It was the generic new people, which I see, you know, I've seen lots of new people and
Continue.
Eventually they're not new. So not you, new in particular. I would, I think we should resolve the meeting schedule, you know, the way we've done the other thing, we're online, where people say, I'm available this time, this time. And then we try to make a, uh, you know, we try to make it so that everyone can be there for the whole meeting. Um, and I, I also think, David, were you, you're not thinking of only once a month. I mean, you're, you must be thinking more because at once a month, it'll take us 10 years to
Right, right. I'm thinking every other week maybe, or maybe, uh, you know, at a, maybe at a minimum. I'm not you know, at a maybe at a minimum. I'm not sure.
Well, also, you know, David, if I don't know if it's too much of a commitment for this group, but um if staff wise, we wanted to um juggle who was doing it even once a week just to get started.
There's that too.
Yeah.
I think it's important to find a time where staff and committee members are expected to be available for the whole time. It it makes it easier for everyone to be running back and forth from one thing to another is hard.
Yeah.
Uh, and the I have one other request, and that is that initial paragraph of definitions of must and should and whatever. I think it would be valuable to just take that paragraph and email it to all board members with just um clarification of definitions so that even on our regular uh public meetings, we are all kind of on board with the the common meanings.
Starting on Monday.
Yeah, so if that could be done, David, that would be helpful.
Okay, we can do that.
Good idea.
Um, so why I I'll communicate with Matt. Um, but I'm thinking maybe a twelve thirty start time, twelve thirty to two every Friday. And that way, you know, Tom can join a couple of minutes late rather than a a few more minutes late. If that if that works, if that works with, if if Matt's meeting today at one thirty was is not a standing meeting at one thirty, then maybe that's a possibility. Um, where we can have a a get a decent hour and a half discussion uh on a regular basis so that we can get through these.
Either that or we find another day like Thursday or Wednesday or something that everybody's available. That would I I again, I'll I can be fairly flexible and so.
Okay.
Me too. Joan here, me too.
Um, would.
Do you need a motion to end our meeting?
Yeah, would you please?
So move motion to um adjourn.
Second.
Kathy, can you state your name there?
Kathy, second.
Um, we'll do a quick roll call vote here. Joan Monroe, how do you vote?
Joan votes yes.
Kathy Romano?
Yes.
Tom Marts?
Yes.
Okay, all. It's unanimous. Thank you all.
Thanks, everybody.
This is a good start and uh we'll 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 keep things going.
Okay, thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Have a good weekend.
Thank you, you too.
Bye, everybody.
Hi.
Bye.
David?
Yes.
Did you want to stay on for a second?
I'm I'm late for a call with.
Oh, okay, never mind. We'll catch up soon.
But we'll catch up soon.
Okay, sound good.
Thank you. Have a good weekend if it's not today.
Yep, thanks. Bye.
Bye bye.